Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin, please turn off your cellphone and use the silent feature. Please note that today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube as part of a pilot project. Welcome. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permissions to extend or alter law for non-conforming uses, and consents to create new laws. Hearing procedure. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or applicant is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside of the hearing room in an effort to resolve any outstanding issues or concerns. If no person is present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and they'll take the matter into the committee for a decision. Making your submissions. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and file Decision Request Card, which are available at the end of this horseshoe, right there, so that we have correct information for our records. If you have a written submission that you read from, please hand it in to Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you are done, who is seated on my right. First, the agent or applicant will make a presentation to committee of the application as submitted. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be allowed to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views. However, covering the same points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for a decision. This will mark the end of all discussion. Please remember to confine your comments to the matters outlined in the application. The decision. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals will be dealt with by a new tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeals Body, or T-Lab. For more information on the T-Lab, please visit their website or the Cofway website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of the committee's decision and to be informed of all appeal proceedings, you must fill out the Decision Request Card referred to earlier. Please include your email address, as T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. Please leave your completed form with Deputy Secretary Treasurer or a member of her staff before leaving today. Once again, there is a seat on my right. Okay, so now we'll move forward with the confirmation of last meeting minutes. Panel members?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'll move adoption of the minutes.
Okay, so motion to adopt has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? Okay, and I'll abstain from voting since I was not here at the last meeting. Interest? Closing files. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed today?
Of 170 Merton Street, file numbers A117317TEY to A118317TEY. This matter was before committee. In April, we received email confirmation that the applicant wishes to withdraw the application since there's been an ownership change in the property and they don't wish to proceed with the proposal. Second property is 521 and 523 Eglington Avenue West, file number A0089/18TEY. We received a request to withdraw the application. The matter was before committee in June to enable for the applicant to file a site plan application and to receive the first round of staff comments. The agent is seeking a refund of a portion of the application fee. Third property is 59 Parkway Avenue, file number A0311/18TEY. We have a request to withdraw the application from today's hearing. The applicant is also seeking a refund of a portion of the application fee. Committee has correspondence on that. The final property is 37 Kildonan Road, file number A0319/18TEY. This matter was also scheduled for hearing today and the applicant is seeking a refund of the application fee. And committee has correspondence on that as well.
So because there are requests for partial fee refund, I suggest we move one by one through the applications in terms of closing them?
It's up to you.
Okay, so we'll move forward with the 117 Martin Avenue Road?
117.
117 Martin?
170 Martin.
170. Okay, panel members, I need a motion?
Close 170 Merton.
Okay, so a motion to close has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ms. Hayes. 521 to 523 Eglington Avenue West?
No refund.
With that refund?
We have a motion open.
Sorry?
We never wrote it on Merton.
Sorry, can't hear you?
We didn't vote on Merton.
Okay, is that with refund or without?
Without.
Okay. So a motion is still standing, so to close 170 Martin without refund, moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Ms. Hayes. All in favor? Okay, so the application has been closed. 521 to 523 Eglington Avenue West?
Through you, Madam Chair, I will move a motion to close the file without refund.
Okay, so a motion to close the file without refund has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been closed. 19...
59 Parkway?
For item 11.
Okay, item 11, 59 Parkway Avenue?
Through you, Madam Chair, move to accept the withdrawal with no refund.
Okay, so a motion to close the file with no refund has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been closed. And the last item is number 16, 37 Kildonan Road?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'll move that this matter be closed without refund.
Okay, so a motion to close this item without refund has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been closed as well. Madam Secretary Treasurer, do we have any requests for deferral in this time slot?
Yes, we have item number three, 19 Northridge Avenue. There was an issue with giving notice, so that application needs to be deferred. Item number four, 207 Kennelworth Avenue, that was also, there was a notice issue that needs to be deferred. And item number seven, 161 Howland Avenue.
Okay, and sorry, what is the reason for 161 Howland Avenue?
Heritage is requesting a deferral.
Okay, so we'll deal with item number three, 19 Northridge Avenue. Do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, no agent or applicant. Panel members, I need a motion?
I would defer all of 19 Northridge, and that is without recirculation fee as there was a staff error.
Okay, so a motion to defer without deferral fees has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Omen, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been deferred. Next is item number seven, 161 Howland Avenue. Do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, there's no agent or applicant, we'll move forward. Panel members, I need a motion?
Any objectors?
Are there any objectors to 161 Howland Avenue? Okay, so if you can please come forward.
Run Howland or?
Run number seven.
What is it, 161 Howland?
Yes, yep. So there's no agent or applicant for 161 Howland then? So you know what, what we're gonna do is we're gonna hold it until they arrive so they have an opportunity to hear your concerns. Okay, so just hold that. So item number four, 207 Kennelworth Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? 207 Kennelworth Avenue, no? Any contesting parties? Okay, so panel members, we'll move forward with the motion.
Through you, Madam Chair, I would move deferral of the application for up to no more than three months and including recirculation fees.
Okay, so a motion to defer including recirculation fees has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application has been deferred. Are those, is that it for the deferrals? Okay, so we'll move forward with vetting the agenda. So I'm just gonna ask if the agent or applicant is here, if they can put up their hand. For item number one, 40 Harwood Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any contesting parties? Okay, so this item will be held. Item number two, 225 King Street West, agent or applicant? Okay, any parties opposing this application or in concern? Okay, so we'll hear the item. Item number three has been deferred. Item number four has been deferred. Item number five, 58 Whitehall Road, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Okay, so we have an interested party. So once again, if there are any people contesting this application or interested in the application, we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues. So I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to see who was contesting the party for the agent. If you can put up your hand once again, the party who's in interest, okay? So we dealt with Whitehall, so that's being held. Item number six, 2972 St. Clair Avenue East, okay, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Item number seven is being held, 161 Howland Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant come in in the last two minutes? No? Okay, so that's going to be held as well. Item number eight, 168 Strawn Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Any interested parties? No? Are you in interest? Okay, so that item will be held as well. Item number nine, 56 Ravenna Crescent, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Item number 10, 23 Roblin Avenue, agent or applicant, any interested parties? Okay, so there's a person in interest, so once again, strongly advise you to step outside. Item number 11 has been closed. Item number 12, 59 Bernard Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Okay, so there's a party in interest, so once again, strongly advise you to step outside. Item number 13, 406 Sumac Avenue, Sumac Street, sorry, agent or applicant? Any interested parties? So is there an interested party for?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. Item number 14, 1340 Bloor Street West, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Item number 15, 181 Cottingham Street, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? Item number 16 has been withdrawn or closed. Item number 17, 77 Brock Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? And item number 18, 31 Alcorn Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, any interested parties? No? Okay. So the items are being held, include item number one, which is 40 Harwood Avenue. Item number five, 58 Whitehall Road. Item number seven, 161 Howland Avenue. Item number eight, 168 Strawn Avenue. Item number 10, Roblin Avenue. Item number 12, 59 Bernard Avenue. And that is it for this time slot. Okay, so we'll proceed with item number two, 225 King Street West. If we can have the agent or applicant please come up. So before you proceed, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent, and then we have a staff report from Urban Forestry. Okay, so if we can, yeah, if you can please introduce yourself.
Thank you, I'm Wendy Naught, planning consultant to Oxford Properties and their tenants in Master Canada.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or would you like to go directly into questions? Sorry? No presentation? Okay, so we'll just go directly into questions. Okay, panel members?
I just had one question, is there any concern with respect to like the amount of noise that would emanate from here? Or is that an issue at all?
The premises will be constructed and demised in accordance with the building code, so it will look after any issues with respect to transmission of sound, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, if there's no discussion, I believe that the variances are indeed minor, meet the four tests. There is no exterior change, so I would be prepared to move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion to approve including forestry condition?
Yes, sorry, including forestry condition number two.
Could I just comment very briefly on forestry condition? This is a concourse level space, it's below grade, so there's no impact on the trees' abgrade. So I think the forestry condition is...
It's recommended and it would be part of my...
Okay. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you. So a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, including forestry condition number two. Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, 2972 St. Clair Avenue East. So the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and if you can please introduce yourself?
Good morning, my name is Maureen Zavzuni. I'm the applicant for 2972 St. Clair Avenue East.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or questions?
I don't think, I don't need a presentation, I'm not sure.
Okay, so we'll proceed with questions. Okay, any questions?
Could you point to any other examples in the area that are looking for the height that you're requesting?
For the height, it's facing a main street and due to existing conditions, the whole house is higher than usual and it's an addition. There was an addition right beside us recently, but not quite as high, that was approved. I did speak with a planner and he recommended to lower it a bit. So we're willing to go to 9.3 meters, and that's with having very modest heights on the first floor and second floor. It's just due to existing conditions, it's very difficult, even with a very low slope, a traditional roof, to accommodate the height.
So you're proposing to amend then your request for variance number three to 9.3 meters?
Correct.
And that's variance number three to bylaw 569, and variance number one to bylaw 43886?
Yeah.
So that'll be 9.3 meters?
9.3 meters.
Okay, thank you.
I would observe that this is facing onto St. Clair, there are apartment buildings within immediate vicinity, and it fronts directly onto commercial properties on the south side. It's a large house for the area, but it's not going to change the character.
Okay, any other comments?
I would agree, there are other homes that have very similar additions and lengths and variances. So I think what's being proposed meets, fits within the character of the neighborhood.
If there's no further comments, I approve of the application as amended, as I believe it's appropriate for the site.
Okay, so once again, we changed various number three under bylaw 569 2013 to 9.3 meters, and then various number one to 43886 to 9.3 meters as well. So a motion to approve the amended application has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder? A second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application is approved as amended, thank you. Moving forward with item number nine, 56 Ravenna Crescent. So the committee has in front of, if we can have the agent or applicant please come up? Just before we proceed, because I did forget to read that part of the speech, I just want to remind everyone here that the committee will not be entertaining any extensive revisions to the proposals at the hearing today. In the instance that the application has any extensive revisions, we will defer the applications to ensure that the revisions are accurate and that all interested parties are informed of the changes. Okay, sorry, so now we'll proceed with item number nine, 56 Ravenna Crescent. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have support and correspondence from 57 Ravenna Crescent, as well as six form letters in support from various addresses on Ravenna Crescent and Earl Grey Road, as well as we have correspondence in concern/interest from 58 Ravenna Crescent and 54 Ravenna Crescent. If you can please introduce yourself?
My name's David Lang, I'm the agent for the application. I'm here today with the owners of the property. I do have a revision here that we had in discussions with the attached neighbor over the last couple of days. It doesn't affect the variances, but we wanted to bring it today to show you.
Okay, so perhaps if you can put it on the projector so everyone can see?
No, no copy.
You can bring the copies closer for us to have, but one perhaps should be on the projector for us to have a closer view. Okay, so it's on page eight, the revision?
Yep.
So this is the revisions that were, seem to be suggested in the owner's letter from 54?
All we've done is we've eliminated the front foyer enclosure, and it's now a proposed open porch. But because we eliminated that, we've actually put the addition on the rear, so if you flip to the next page, you can see that. And we discussed it with the zoning examiner, they said that there was no impact on the variances. I actually have a letter from the attached neighbor verifying that they looked all that. If you'd like me to submit that as well.
So is there's no longer going to be a front ground floor addition?
No, it's now a front porch only.
Are you reconstructing the porch or are you leaving as is?
The porch does have to get rebuilt, there's some walkout stairs that are going down there, but the actual enclosure, the addition, is not on the...
Okay, so perhaps we should change the purpose of the application?
We still require the front yard setback, the alteration, because there's the second suite in the basement. And the FSI doesn't change because we took that whole footprint that was the addition and just put it on the back of the house. The idea was they had a foyer and an entrance that they wanted. The neighbors, they didn't really like it, so we took it off and we've put it on the back. So functionally, the homeowner is still achieving what they wanted to without making the application more confusing than it needed to be.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? How do you feel about changing the purpose application, deleting the constructing a front ground floor addition and changing that to rebuilding the front porch? To be more specific? And then attaching the plans, the submitted plans? Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer?
Modification, I would just change rebuilding to reconstructing the front porch. And do you need to have all the drawings tied, or are there some that can be eliminated?
I updated the whole package, so the elevations look different. The whole package would probably be easiest.
Okay. Okay, panel members, any other questions? No? Okay, so reconstructing the front porch, we'll change that in the purpose of the application. Panel members, there's no other questions, discussion, or emotion?
As far as discussion, the substantive question here to me is that the main wall height variance is significant. My perspective on it is that the front elevation is not changing significantly, it's not going to be perceptible, it's tucked in under the peak. Comfortable with it, but I did flag that.
I have a photo of the neighbor.
Sorry, worry, in discussion, so... I agree with Mr. Carlson, the addition is mostly in the back. There isn't much changes from the front, especially now that enclosed porch is not being considered. So that mitigates any issues in terms of the height impacts on the streetscape.
I would agree, I think it's quite an eclectic street in terms of character of different architectures. I think with the amendment, enclosing of the front porch, I think might have, you could have suggested from a character perspective might change, but with that change, I think that these are reasonable, given what's already existing in the area. If there's no other comments, I'd be prepared to move a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair, to move a motion to approve the application with an amendment to the purpose to indicate it's a reconstruction of the front porch and with the attachment of the drawings that were filed with the committee today, as I believe it is appropriate and meets the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, so a motion to approve the... So a motion to approve the slightly amended application has been moved by Ms. Hayes, including the condition to attach the drawings that were submitted to the committee today. Do we have a seconder?
A second.
Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the amended application has been approved. Thank you. And we also have a letter, I mean, letter in support of the neighbor. Okay, so we move forward with item number, number 13, 406 Summick Street. Can you have the agent applicant, please come up? So the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have email correspondence from community planning. So if we can have silence in the room. And then we have a staff report from Heritage. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, I'm Barry Goldman, the architect and agent for this application. In addition to that material, I have here a letter of support, quite a few of the neighbors, and I'll just point out, most importantly, the adjacent neighbors on each side. This is a row of three houses, so both of the attached neighbors are in favor, as well as most of them up and down the street and behind. I'll just give you the.
Ah, yeah. Okay, so there is, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen signatures in support, including the directly adjacent neighbors. Panel members, would you like a presentation? Okay, I'll go directly into questions. Okay, questions?
So you're aware of the comments from Heritage and Planning?
Yes.
And you have no concerns with?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. Through you, Madam Chair, if there are no other questions, I would be prepared to move approval. I think that what's being proposed fits within the context of the neighborhood. There are other homes, I believe, number 426 has a walkout, so that's not a new thing being introduced as well. So I would move approval, including the Heritage conditions.
And also, how about permeable pavers? Is this suggestion made in the?
Yeah, I can, I would be okay to put in a condition for permeable pavers.
Okay. So permeable pavers at the front? Front, existing front. Front yard.
Okay, so that's my motion to approve, including the conditions outlined in the Heritage report dated September the 12th, including permeable pavers in the front.
Okay, so a motion to approve.
For the walkway. Yeah, the walkway.
For the walkway, yeah. Okay, so a motion to approve, including the outline condition, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder? Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 1340 Blor Street West. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans and elevations. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, my name is Aphrodite Leira, the architect of this project. In addition to that, we have also received a letter from the councilor, not having any objection, but I can pass you. And also the letter from the business association.
Panel members, would you like a presentation or should we go directly into questions? You have two variances. Okay, so we'll go directly into questions. Okay, no questions? If there are no questions, we'll go into discussion or a motion.
If there's no comments on my part, I would be prepared to move a motion to approve the application, having reviewed all the material filed. I believe the application is appropriate and indeed minor, and I would move for approval.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
I will.
Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you. Item number 15, 181 Cottingham Street. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry. We have seven form letters in support from a number of addresses on Cottingham Street, including the one adjacent neighbor, 179. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning, I'm Selena Cameron. I'm the homeowner and agent.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation?
I don't need a presentation, Madam Chair.
Okay, no presentation? Okay, we'll go directly into questions. Questions?
Actually, I don't have any questions.
So where are ground floor addition? Okay. If there are no questions or comments, we'll, I'll need a motion.
Through you, Madam Chair. From what I could see, there are a lot of additions, again, varying in size. What's being proposed is not of character. I feel it meets the four tests and I would move approval, including forestry condition number two.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
A second.
Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you. Item number 16 was closed. Item number 17, 77 Brock Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a report from community planning, as we have, as well as we have correspondence in support from 83 Brock Avenue. If you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm David Castellan. I'm the owner of 77 Brock Avenue.
Okay, panel members, these two variances, would you need a presentation? Or directly into questions? Okay, we'll go directly into questions.
I mean, the short revision here, could you describe the retail use?
The retail, well, can I read my letter? I spent all night on it. The first, we're requesting two variances. The first one is a change to the existing zoning to accommodate our proposed use, which is small retail store and office. Both of these uses are for our own purposes and incidental to our primary use, which is manufacturing chocolate. Our second request is relief from the parking bylaw. This building has had the same parking layout for 50 years and we want to continue with that. Aside from myself, I'm none of our employees trying.
So in terms of parking spaces, the parking lot is quite large. So who's occupying the other spaces? Because you're only able to provide five, right?
Right. Sorry, it's not on the plan, but there's actually a big hydro transformer installed that kind of cut off a chunk of it.
Okay.
I think there's still five parking spots. I drive, we have a delivery van, and then there's three extra ones for any potential customers or visitors.
And you're comfortable with the condition from planning?
I'm sorry, which one is that?
The floor of the retail use be restricted?
Oh, yes, yeah. Restricting the office and retail use, yeah.
And then my other question is, in terms of community engagement, has there been any interaction with the community? Because that has been previously a commercial use space.
That's right.
But there's a lot of residential houses around it, so was there any engagement with local residents?
Yes, I have introduced myself.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you, okay, so you have letters of support. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. Okay, so 13 signatures in support. Okay, with various addresses on Brock. Okay, panel members, any other questions?
No further questions.
Nope. Okay, if no questions, discussion or a motion?
I'm comfortable with this, so long as it remains incidental. I would suggest we put a three year, five year review period on it.
Okay. Panel members, how you feel about that? Yep. Okay. I think that's a good idea.
It's interesting to see if there's only variances required under the old bylaw for here. So that's, that would be my only counter with respect to the review period.
The new bylaw is more generous about incidental.
I think that what Ms. Hayes is saying, that if we put the review on and then these become redundant, then there wouldn't be any variances involved at all for them to come back for.
That is true.
Because there's, that was just, as I looked at it, noting that if the new bylaw were fully enforced right now, there would be no need to have an application.
Valid point. Do you want to go forward with your motion?
I mean, discussion, it wasn't a motion yet.
Oh, I thought you were ready to go.
So I, hearing that, I'd be prepared to move without a review.
Okay, including the planning condition?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the planning condition outlined in September 10th report, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
A second.
Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? Okay, so the application's been approved. Thank you. Item number 18, 31 Alcorn Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry. If you can please introduce yourself and your address.
Good morning, committee. My name is Luca Penzo. I'm the designer and agent for 31 Alcorn Avenue.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or directly into questions? Okay, so we'll go directly into questions.
Okay.
From the observation, it would appear that the, what you're requesting in terms of an FSI is relatively similar to what already exists in the neighborhood?
Yes, the actual attached neighbor has the third story addition that we are proposing and it was approved at 1.58. And I have the actual file number here.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, what's the existing FSI? Or how much are you adding in terms of?
The existing? Sorry, I should have that here. The existing was 118.5 meters squared and the proposed is 183.1. So the existing was already beyond the density of 1.0. Actually, my chart is too small for me to read what it is, actually.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? If there are no other questions, discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, if there are no other comments from my colleagues, I would be prepared to move approval of the application, including forestry condition number two, as I feel it meets the four tests, fits within the context of the neighborhood.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder? Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move forward with the contested items. So item number one, do we have the agent applicant in here and the parties contesting the application as well? Okay, so if we can have the agent applicant, please come up to the podium and the parties contesting the applications, if they could be seated on my left hand side? Would you guys like more time?
If we could.
Okay, so we'll just step this item down. Okay, so because the other neighbors, would the other neighbors like more time? Sorry, is that a no for the? You can go, okay. So we'll just proceed with the application. Okay, so if we can have the contestant parties, please come up to the, to the side of, on my left hand side and be seated. And I'll just need to know, before we proceed, how many of you are planning to speak and if there is a spokesperson for their group? It's important not to repeat similar concerns.
I can speak.
Okay, so just one person?
Yeah.
Two? Okay, so two people. Okay. So before we proceed, so item number one, the committee has in front of us a plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a cover letter from David McKay, the agent. We have agency reports from Transportation for Services and Urban Forestry. We have correspondence in concern from 44, 38 and 48 Harwood Road, as well as we have correspondence in opposition from 8 Tilsin, 6 Tilsin and 42 Harwood Road. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is, sorry, and members of the committee, my name is Silas Savania. I'm a planner with MHBC Planning, which is located at 7050 Weston Road, Suite 230 in Vaughan. I am the planning consultant on behalf of my client, Daphne DeGroot, 25934548, Ontario Inc., for the proposed minor variance application for the property municipally addressed as 4D Harwood, which I will refer to as the subject site. The proposal is to permit, in addition to an existing two-story dwelling, the proposal includes a three-story addition expansion of the first and second floor at the rear. In addition, a ground floor deck and a third floor walkout terrace is proposed, all which will be located at the rear of the existing building. The, sorry, the proposal provides parking space in front of, in the front yard, which is partially on the subject lands and partially on the public boulevard of Harwood Road. The client has submitted an application to the City Transportation Off-Street Parking Division to permit the proposed front yard parking, which has been reviewed and approved by staff. I would like to note that our client has designed the proposal based on similar existing developments in the area, for example, 26 and 28 Harwood, which demonstrates the evolving character of the neighborhood.
So do you have pictures of 26 or 28 Harwood?
Yes, I actually have.
Statistics in terms of their heights?
Yeah.
And FSI? So maybe, okay, so I'll just let you.
Finish and then we'll go back. Yeah, I have a photo survey of the area if you would like.
Okay.
Okay, so the proposed development is requesting the following variances. Firstly, for building height and the height of the rear wall. The general purpose and intent of a maximum height is to ensure appropriate transition and control of the massing of building types. The proposal is seeking a building height that is consistent with other proposals in the area. For example, 23 Bell Size Drive, two, sorry, 313 Bellzell's Drive, 220 Manor, 282 Manor. These heights range in from 9.55 meters to 10 meters in height, which all have been approved through the Committee of Adjustment. The proposal, and the increase in height, is to recognize the third floor addition. It is important to note that this third floor addition is set back to allow for the terrace as well. The third, sorry, the design of the third story is to have an appearance of a roof, which will maintain the character of the neighborhood and consistent with existing buildings on Harwood and throughout the neighborhood. The second variances that we are looking for is for density. The general intent and purpose of floor space index and gross floor area is to ensure that the size of the proposed use is appropriate for the development of the area. The proposal, the proposed development is consistent with a number of properties in terms of density in the area, including 236 Manor, 282 Manor and 142 Foreman Avenue. These densities range in 0.79 to 8.2 FSI. The proposal does not require reduction in building setbacks or needs a variance for building length, so we're building within the developable area in terms of setbacks. The proposed development doesn't exceed lot coverage and the addition is located mainly at the rear of the property, at the rear of the building, which will not create a negative impact or have any impact on the streak scape of Harwood. Lastly, there's a few variances for the parking space. As noted earlier, the application was reviewed by the City Transportation Services Division. So they reviewed the application and it's been approved to allow that parking space in the front yard. So the Off-Street Parking Division has no objection to the application, so that will be a technical amendment to satisfy the required parking space. As such, it is my opinion that the proposed variance meets the four tests under, for a minor variance, under Section 41.5 of the Planning Act, and is my opinion that the committee approve the application as it represents good planning and is in the public interest. We understand that a few of the neighbors have come out and provided letters prior to this hearing. As such, it is my opinion that the proposed variance meets the four tests under, for a minor variance, under Section 41.5 of the Planning Act, and is my opinion that the committee approve the application as it represents good planning and is in the public interest. We understand that a few of the neighbors have come out and provided letters prior to this hearing, the neighbor has, our owner has met with the homeowners of 38 Harwood and 42 Harwood, which are the adjacent property owners, to discuss the proposed minor variance application. We've completed a photographic survey as well, just to help with kind of, to show the evolution and change of the character of the neighborhood. When we were outside speaking to the neighbors, we were, one of the main concerns that they have is privacy of the third-story terrace. Our client is willing to put in some, in place, privacy measures along either side of the terrace to eliminate any privacy issues or overlook that may be caused by having that terrace. The owners at 38 Harwood have expressed some concern in terms of the location of the windows, and we were just in the middle of kind of negotiating some type of change that could potentially occur. Unfortunately, the architect isn't here today, so we couldn't confirm exactly the change in the location, but our client is more than willing to ensure that the windows that they are proposing will not have direct view into their home, so we were just trying to still figure, figure that out. That's it for now.
Okay, so we'll step you down. We'll have the parties contesting the application, please come up, or one of the individuals.
Did you want a copy of the photo survey, or no?
We'll, we'll deal with that.
Later?
Yeah. So one of the neighbors, if they can please come up, introduce themselves and their address.
My name is Tracy Hamilton. I live at 42 Harwood Road, right beside the proposed building. I have written a letter, and I'd like to know, have the committee read all the letters? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so I know you don't want us to repeat what the, I mean, if you've read them, you understand that we are concerned and opposed. We are not opposed to a house. We are opposed to the variances that they would like. For instance, the maximum height variance, I forgot to write down your name. I forgot to write down your name. Yeah. Celeste. Celeste talked about the other houses on the street, Harwood Road, 26 and 28. They have been rebuilt, but they are not a three-story house. The majority of the houses on the street are two-story brick with peaked roofs, and this is going into the middle of the street as a three-story rectangular prism, so it does not fit into the street scape of Harwood Road. I'm opposing the variance of height. I'm also opposing the variance of the 33% growth in taking up of, of the lot. Number two, the maximum prevented floor space index is six times the area of the lot, and they would like eight, 0.8 times the variance of the lot. Being a direct neighbor, that is a huge amount of wall and space that I will be directly looking at. The other concern I have is, oh, I said about it being different. Celeste also commented that the roof of the new existing building would fit in with the street scape, and I'm not sure how a flat roof of a third floor fits in with a peaked roof landscape. Thank you for listening, and, oh, sorry, my other concern is with the privacy of the third-floor terrace walkout, and I know I can't oppose that there be a walkout, but I would like a privacy screen or something be proposed by the committee. That must be in place when they build.
Okay. I just have a question. How many three, third-floor decks are there on that side?
Harwood Road?
Yeah.
Zero. Decks.
On third floor?
Right. There are no har, there are no third-floor decks on a Harwood Road.
Oh, because it's mostly two-story homes?
Right, we, yeah.
Sorry, we'll just have one person speak, so, okay. Okay, so there's, okay.
We're a very small street. It's two blocks long.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can have the next person, please come up, introduce themselves and their address.
Hi, I'm Stephen Lamb. I live in 38 Harwood Road with my wife Patricia and our two young children. We do welcome the redevelopment of the site, but we have a few concerns that primarily revolve around privacy and safety. To start with the safety issue, the height that they're seeking will create a straight vertical wall facing our property. That will, could potentially require a 30-foot, sorry, 34-foot chimney, which will look a little bit like a smokestack, to maintain fire code compliance. We are, we can negotiate to find solutions to this issue, and we look forward to that opportunity. Privacy-wise, there are windows that I don't know that there's a precedent for. I could be wrong. The extension, the addition at the back, there's a main floor window that would look directly out onto our backyard. We have a little terrace, a ground-floor terrace there, and we request some kind of a privacy screening or an adjustment to the design of that window to ensure our privacy as well as theirs while they're in their living room. That could be a fence, or, as I said, a redesign of the, of the window. The window facing into our mutual drive, that they're going, the plan calls for the existing window to be bricked up, and a new window further back. We do have a problem with that, in that the line of sight from that room would then be directly onto my daughter's bed. Right now, it faces, the other one, the existing window faces onto a wall. Again, I think this can be mitigated by a window design change, and we're open to discussing that with the, with the applicants. And finally, the, the height, the height variance, the precedence for the height variance are based on designs that had a drive-in garage. My understanding is that those are no longer permitted, so it just seems like while there are buildings, houses this tall in the neighborhood, almost all of them were based on the requirements of what used to be allowed, but is no longer allowed.
Sorry, that's 26 and 28 Harwood have integral garages?
Yes.
Okay.
Most of the houses that are this tall in the broader neighborhood, we found one that didn't have a garage, but it's right next door to an equally tall, older building. But, so as I said, if we can have some privacy concerns addressed through the plan, so that it will be permanent beyond, beyond, you know, the first owner's half, you know, the Moti and Daphne's tenancy, that would be greatly appreciated by us. Is there anything else? Am I missing anything? The windows, the terrace, privacy? Yes, and it would be the only three-story on the street.
Okay, panel members, any other questions? I just have, so are there any rare two-story additions?
Pardon me?
Are there any rare two-story additions in that block of houses?
There are two-story additions, but.
In the rear?
In the rear, yes. But to my knowledge, none of them have windows that face out into the adjacent property on the side.
Okay.
But as I said, like an adjustment to the design of the window to ensure privacy of both sides, I think.
Do they have decks, those two-story additions that you can think of? No?
Like a ground-floor deck.
No, maybe like even on the second story, if it doesn't go all the way to the, to the back wall. No? Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. So we have the agent, please come up and respond to the raised concerns.
Through you, Madam Chair, to just speak about the built form. I know that some of the neighbors have issues that the building or the style is of more of a modern, but it's important to note that a variance is not required for the type of style of building. We are ensuring that, in this development, the client is ensuring that the appropriate setbacks on either side are being met, or haven't even changed, as this is an addition. A lot of the renovations are, in the area, have been tear downs and rebuilds. This is just adding on. They have, I know they have concerns in terms of the third-story terrace. Once again, we were in talks of finding ways of creating privacy on either side, so there's no overlook. It's also important to note that, that terrace doesn't go the full length of the addition. It's set back quite a bit and only allows enough space for a seating area for that bedroom that is proposed on the third story. The roof line, I know it was mentioned in terms of the flat roof. The architect has incorporated a more of an angulared style as well, like, yes, from the front, it will look flat, but on the sides, it is angled to keep in with what is existing in the neighborhood as well. Did I miss anything else? In terms of the 30, the density, we understand that we are asking for an increase in density, but we feel that it is an appropriate scale for this site. The, once again, in terms of the built form, it is consistent with the other properties in the area that have put on additions or tear down and built up, so we feel that it is consistent, and our client had taken a lot of time researching, ensuring that what they were putting forward as an application was very similar to others in, in the neighborhood. There was mention that the, the properties on Harwood had the, or the garage, which fluctuates the FSI. There's a few examples that we have found in the area that don't have a garage, but still have the height as well, so there's a bit of mix in both, and it is important to note that the parking is allowed in the front yard, so the need for that garage is okay. Yeah, I think I've answered. Did I miss anything? The window, we are willing, the client is willing to meet with you both privately and try to figure out a solution in terms of that window. I know that is a concern, as it's your daughter's bedroom. Before, we were discussing maybe a different location, if we can move it over, or even a, a different style, to ensure that you don't have any concern in terms of privacy. I think I've touched base with.
Okay, panel members, any other questions? Do you have any questions?
What are the addresses for the other properties with, with similar heights?
Yeah, so I have quite a few. The ones I mentioned here, in terms of height, are 213 Bell Size Drive, 313 Bell Size Drive, 220 Manor, 228 Manor. So those range in, those are 9.5, yeah, I do. It'll be helpful.
On the projector, yeah.
Oh, okay.
If you can, you have photos of those houses as well?
Yeah.
Okay, panel members, questions? So if you can show us on the map, where's 26 and 28 Harwood? 10, 10 addresses down. Okay. Okay, thank you. Panel members? So we have no more questions, so we'll be, go into discussion. Any comments?
I have some concerns with respect to the character of the neighborhood, and also the privacy considerations of the design with all the windows on the, overlooking, on the north elevation, I think it is. We don't have anything tangible for us right now, not the north, sort of the south elevation. But I am concerned with respect to the height, principally the, the design of the structure meeting, fitting in with the character of the neighborhood. Those are some of my comments.
I would elaborate on that with the main wall height issue that I always raise. We've approved a couple today where it has been maintaining the existing roof form and the existing roof line. This is not. We are looking at an actual main wall height variance here that is quite large. And I do share concerns about the character.
I would echo the comments. My main concern is really the, the main wall height, because the parking variances are technical. They do have permission to have a spot there, and, you know, in terms of the floor space index, I don't think it's really that out of character. Really, the main wall height is the main.
Yeah, I would say the FSI really is.
Yeah, exactly.
Slope roof.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I agree. I mean, there is something to be said about the fact that there are no variances for setbacks and building length, but I do question the appropriateness of this, of this modern house, and, and the adjacent properties that seem to be quite consistent with the two stories and, and slope roofs.
I, I also would like to add, I really do respect that the, the agent has, you know, tried to work with people today. I'm not sure if that was done in advance, but to address the concerns like the, the windows and overlook that are not really part of the variances, it would have been nice to come in with something that, you know, shows some of the changes that we could have perhaps worked with. And then in terms of the deck, there is no variance for the deck, so really, the only issue is the height.
Yeah, though at the same time, I would say that the deck doesn't seem to be a consistent character feature throughout the properties.
But it could have been mitigated with some kind of screening.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion, I need a motion.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move a motion to refuse the application, as I believe the application would not maintain the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, so a motion to refuse has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a second there? Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been refused. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming out. So once again, we strongly advise you to fill out the decision request court.
Yes, ma'am.
Ah, yes. Okay, so if there's any appeals procedures, you'll be informed. We'll move forward with item number, item number five, 58 White Hall Road. Okay, so if we can have the agent applicant please come up. If we can have the contesting parties, please be seated on my left hand side. Okay, so before we proceed, the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from Vanessa Fong, which is the agent. We have a massing study from also the agent. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry and also from Heritage. We have interest, sorry, correspondence and interest slash concern from the North Rosedale Resident Associations. And then we have correspondence and opposition from 47 White Hall Road. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Fong, applicant and architect for the 58 White Hall.
Okay, so if you can please give us a very quick summary of your proposal.
Sure. So it's an existing two-story lot and it is facing three streets essentially, so it's a corner lot. And the clients would like to do a renovation. It hasn't been touched since the 60s, so it's a lot of background upgrade, as well as do an addition so that it can suit their family of five of three young children and two adults and just make more space. Existing is three sort of very modest bedrooms and one washroom on the second floor, so just upgrading that. We are triggering three variances, one for the building depth. We're going over by two feet from the allowable. The floor space index will be going over to .726, allowable is .6. And then the rear lot setback for the garage, we would like to take it to a zero lot line, which is consistent with all the other garages along Summer Hill Avenue along the back. It's a street, not a lane, and all the garages along there are at zero lot line. We're aware of the condition number two from Urban Forestry, which we've already have engaged an arborist and the application is underway for that permit to injure and, and for the hoarding plan. And we also acknowledge letters from the North Rosedale Residents Association, which don't have any objections to the variances we are requesting. They've just made a note that to work with Heritage, which we've already started with. We've had meetings with the planner at Heritage and, and I think we're sort of en route to finding an amicable solution. So that's continuing. And then we are also acknowledging Mr. Walker's letter as well. I think just for the record, noted in Heritage's memo that it referred to the existing building as a three-story building, but it's in fact sort of like a one and a half, two-story existing condition, and it's for the North Rosedale area district, not the south. I think that's it on my end.
Okay, so we'll have you step down. We'll have the contesting parties please come up, introduce themselves and their address and any, the concerns they have with the application.
Okay.
You can go ahead.
My name is Martin Walker. I delivered 47 White Hall Road, which is across the street, and I have written a letter which you have on file. My, I have no objection to the enlargement of the building per se. My concern, as expressed in the letter, is the fact that this property has two parking garages for two parking spaces and the new plan reduces it to one. Bearing in mind in this neighborhood that a lot of the houses were built long before the present expansion of the use of the automobile and parking is inadequate, a lot of on-street parking, and I perceive that the allowing of this development as is, namely the reduction of the one to one garage, will encourage more parking on the street because families in this neighborhood have more than one car, generally speaking. And there is no guarantee that the owners who are going to do the renovation will not sell and another family will come in with different views. So my complaint is really not against the developer. It is really to draw to attention of this committee, which I think represents the city, to decide whether in this situation encouraging more on-street parking is more important than allowing a slightly higher building density. I believe that more on-street parking should not be encouraged. My question, and I'm not into numbers or whatever, but why not have the second garage and, and expand the density on the property?
Okay, so we'll have the agent respond to that question. Okay, thank you very much.
We acknowledged Mr. Walker's concerns that we are reducing the number of parking spots, but we, parking is not a variance. We are meeting the Toronto bylaws for number of parking spaces. For the owners, having an outdoor garden space is taking precedence over a second parking spot because they have three young children, and so they want to give up that parking space for a garden space. It allows us to meet the percentage of landscaping as well as lot coverage variances so that we don't have those as additional variances. And we also note that there are, on a lot of lots that back onto Summer Hill Avenue on the east and west, there are no garages in some cases, so number 42, 44, 46, 48 to the east, and then number 70 to 82 on the west inclusive, do not have any garages. And then there are many that have just one parking space garage as well, number 52, 54, 62, 46, 66, 84, 88, 92, 96, 98. So it is consistent with the area. And I, we didn't see any memos from traffic or transportation services, so I don't think they have any objection to this.
Just out of curiosity, do you know if there's any on-street parking available? Like have you contacted?
There's day, day parking, but not overnight parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we'll go directly into discussion, discussion.
I think, in my opinion, the variances on themselves are, are minor. I, I do hear Mr. Walker's concerns about parking, but as the applicant said, there, there is no variance for parking that this committee is dealing with at this time. So we really don't have any clout, if you will, to, to speak to a double versus a single car garage. And, you know, we have the Heritage conditions, so I, in my opinion, what's being proposed fits within the context of the neighborhood and meets the four tests.
The only, the only issue that the applicant could speak to is general desirability of the proposal and to make an issue that would seem a real stretch when...
It would be because all the houses have their parking on Summer Hill at the back, whether it be with a garage or without. If, if there are no other comments, I would, I would be prepared to move approval, including forestry condition number two and the Heritage conditions outlined in their report dated September 12th.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, including the two outlined conditions from Forestry and Heritage. Do we have a seconder?
I will.
Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the application's been approved. Thank you for coming out. Item number, item number seven, 161 Howland Avenue. Okay, so if we can have the agent please come up and the parties contesting the application sitting on my left hand side. So the committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry and Heritage Preservation Services. We have 11 form, form letters in support from various occupants or owners on Howland Avenue as well as Wells Street. And then we have correspondence and opposition from number of addresses on Howland Avenue, mostly on, and 48 Wells. Yeah, it's mostly on Howland Avenue. Also, Spadina.
Heritage is asking for a deferral.
Okay, so this also is an application where Heritage is requesting deferral. Okay, so if you can please introduce yourself and your address.
Hi, Madam Chair. I'm Kyle Cadra, the agent. The address is 161 Howland Avenue. We do acknowledge receiving the concerns of the neighbors, although some of them did provide support and then they withdrew it, so, and we also acknowledge the recommendation from Heritage, so I am here to ask for a deferral.
Okay. So how do the neighbors feel about a deferral?
Can we speak to the oppositions if we're not getting a deferral comeback?
Um...
Sorry, what was your question?
No, because the application might change significantly.
We basically wouldn't, were, if we defer it, we're like not hearing it at all.
Yeah.
What I would hope is that the applicant would take the time as well to meet with you before coming back here to discuss the concerns and maybe mitigate them.
And through you, Madam Chair. Bear in mind, you can submit concerns by mail.
Yeah. And also the application might change significantly based on Heritage feedback.
That's the plan.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so maybe if we can have one spokesperson...
Can we just understand the, the deferral is potentially changing the project?
Yes, it's to consult with Heritage Services because they're asking for a deferral. Yeah.
And, and we are also going to address some of the concerns for the neighbors.
Okay.
We're going to change the delegate.
So if we can have one person, maybe a spokesperson, introduce themselves and their address and...
Can I just say your name?
Sure.
Good morning. My name is Claudia Careishi. I'm the homeowner of 173. I was approached by Connie Wu for this application and misunderstood it, or it was misrepresented to me that this would be a salarium. So I sent an email on the 14th of September rescinding my agreement to this proposal, and I just wanted to say that verbally.
Okay, and how do you, how does the group overall feel about a deferral?
I, I would like to ask Barry Glaspohl to address that.
Okay.
So, and, and I would just like to add, just to put your mind at ease, that we did receive correspondence that showed people had signed in, in support, but we also have the ones who retracted, including yours. So it's all noted in our material.
So I'm, I'm Barry Glaspohl at 163 Howland, the house to the north. So as I understand it, the applicant may be changing and may, may consider changing the project or not proceeding at all possibly. So on that basis, with our group here is, is agreeable to a deferral.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Okay, so if we can have the agent please come up. Panel members, any questions? Discussion about potentially the, the length of the deferral, because Heritage is requesting six months, which is, which is not the norm for the Committee of Adjustments.
Are you comfortable with six months?
If, if you find it appropriate and if it's sufficient for them, I would just suggest that they make it three months. If it's, if it's a required time, then we're okay with it.
I mean, in my...
Six months?
In my opinion, Heritage is aware of this, and I think that three months is enough time. They should be prepared, so I would like, well, I, I mean, I think the, the applicant then needs to, you know, get, get in contact with them right away, speak to them, and then hopefully have a meeting with residents who are here.
I mean, if the application is not ready in three months, it wouldn't be an issue to reschedule it further down. Okay. Okay. No other comments, so let's move forward with a motion then.
I would move for all the application for a maximum of three months.
Okay, including...
Including recirculation fees to allow the applicant to consult with Heritage Preservation Services and the community.
Okay, so a motion, a motion to defer, including recirculation fees and maximum three months, has been moved by Mr. Carlson, seconded by Ms. Hayes. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been deferred. Thank you very much for coming out. So before we proceed with the next three items, we're just going to take a quick break, bathroom break, so we'll be, be back here at 11 o'clock, so seven minutes.
So we closed the file this morning on 37 Howland Avenue.
Yeah.
Apparently the agent's changed his mind. He's here with some neighbors.
Serious?
Yeah.
So reopen it then?
If you wish to reopen, I would maybe...
Like item 16?
Yeah. I don't know if any other neighbors may have been here that went away because we... I think I need to come back another time.
Which one?
Why?
Do we have, do we have any? Okay, so we'll start the hearing again, we'll proceed with item number eight. Okay, so 168 Strong Avenue, so if we can have the agent or the applicant please come up, and then we'll have the parties contesting the application be seated on my left-hand side. So before we proceed, the committee has in front of us. Plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations, we have the cover letter from the agent, we have staff report from community planning, we have correspondence and support from 166 Strong Avenue, and then we have correspondence, opposition from a number of addresses on Massey Street, Strong, and Strong, okay? So if you can please introduce yourself and give us a very quick presentation of your proposal.
Yes, hi, my name is Gabriel Fain, I'm the architect and agent on behalf of Josh and his family, who are wanting to create a addition and extension to, sorry, addition and renovation to his property. The idea is that he wants to fit his family of five into this renovated row house, so that really dictates the kind of density and massing that we're looking for. We've had discussions with the neighbors, and we feel that they're comfortable in terms of the overall massing of the proposal. It's simply a second-floor addition and a third-floor addition, and we're actually pushing the rear of the building towards Strong, so that's a key issue in terms of creating more space in the rear yard. And we've had discussions with the planning department, specifically the planner on this file, who's actually supporting the variances that we're requesting, and the conditions that he's placed on the approval, we are definitely in agreement with what he's proposing. There are a number of precedents in the area that we were looking at in terms of the overall massing of the project, and we feel that it's, the proposal is very much in line with the character of the street, and Strong is a very different street than Massey, where we've had a lot of discussions with the neighbors on Massey, but Strong is a very different street, which is experiencing different kinds of growth and development, and it's more of a kind of thorough fare to connect Queen to Adelaide, so it can accept a little bit different kinds of densities, in my opinion. Just getting to the specifics of the variances and some of the key issues, in terms of the height, the key thing was to create a datum line in the front that's at 8.64 meters, so the perception of the building from the street will actually be very much keeping the datum line of the Heritage buildings adjacent to the house, keeping that alignment, and then sloping the third floor back, so really the perception from the street is quite connected to the adjacent houses. The existing house at 168 Strong is kind of the ugly duckling in this row of townhouses, so really we feel like it's an improvement in terms of what's there. I mentioned before about the rear yard setback, we're actually improving that rear yard setback, we're actually improving the front yard landscape, currently there's no front yard landscape, and we're actually creating additional landscape there, so overall, we feel like the addition and renovation is respectful, and it meets the four planning tests in terms of the minor variances, many of these variances, in fact, are existing variances, and many of the houses on the street actually don't meet the requirements of both zoning bylaws, so it's really trying to work with the bylaws and work with the neighbors to come up with a solution that really works for everyone, including the owner and his three children.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so we'll have the parties contesting the application, do we have a spokesperson, or how many of you are applying to speak? Okay, so if you speak, just make sure not to repeat the previous comments that were raised, or concerns that were raised. Okay, if you can please come up and introduce yourself and your address.
Good morning, I'm Kristi Boyes, and this is Chris Boyes, and we live at 174 Strong, we are the owners. First of all, we're pleased to see that this development is going to take a multi-unit to a single-family dwelling, and we're looking forward to welcoming Josh and his family. The reason that we're here is that we are increasingly seeing proposals for minor variances to increase density in our neighborhood, we were here just over a month ago on another one, so we do have a concern of taking the density up to nearly two times, rather than one time, which is the allowed amount. The reason for that is, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that, but the main thing is a precedent, if everybody in our neighborhood did two times density, we would be looking at each other with only a small walkway in between our houses, and I mean, same with us, we certainly don't have a two times density where we're living, and we would be right up against our neighbors to the back, so we just don't like that, in the future, people are going to be saying, okay, let's all do two times density. So also, you know, at two times, there's privacy issues, there's, if the whole neighborhood has two times density, the sky views are affected, there's shadowing issues, so we would like to see, certainly, we understand that the house is already higher than one times density, but we would like to see something lower than that. Sorry, yeah, 1.5, 1.6 might be a little bit more acceptable, and we understand that Joshua has a big family and he needs the space, and we have a family as well, we need the space, but we have a bigger lot, and so we just feel that if folks need more space, they should buy a lot or have a lot that is going to afford the amount of space that they need. So we did submit a letter of objection, talking about the density, two other issues, one of them being the height, we did have a meeting before this, and I think we're okay on the height, now that we understand that it will be pretty much in line with the two neighbors on either side, so we're okay with that. And also, our concern was about the look, this particular area on Strong, while they are right to say that the whole street is a little bit of a mix and match of design, but the particular row of houses between 162 and 184 are all Victorian, has that, you know, the peaked look, we would like to see that maintained, so I think they were in agreement with also trying to maintain the character of that section, and they are right to say that 168 currently is the ugly duckling, and this will be an improvement, so I think we've come to a pretty good agreement on those two items. And density, they did say they would take a look at and see what they could do, some ideas might be to utilize the basement in another way to get enough bedrooms for their children. Our last issue was parking, we have to bring this up, because there are lots of people on our street who would love to have front pad parking, but we're not, they're not giving out any more front pad parking spaces, however, it seems that if you renovate your place and you get a garage, you get a front pad parking, and every time this happens, it just recently happened with 144 Strong, every time this happens, we lose a public spot, and right now, we have 16 publicly available spaces on Strong between Queen and Adelaide, and 13 houses that do not have a front pad, so it's already quite tight, when we have guests, it's near to impossible to have anybody to have a place on the street, and also, even the people that have the parking permits, it's pretty scarce, the parking, so we're losing another spot. The last thing I just wanted to bring up, aside from our letter, is the precedent study that they have brought forth, I have a few issues with it, a few concerns, first of all, we don't, we don't really believe that any of the properties they've brought forward are relevant, some of them are on Richmond Street, which, and as far over as Richmond and Bathurst, I didn't even go take a picture because it's too far to walk in the evening to go get a picture, it's not relevant, it's not, it's not our neighborhood, also Richmond is heavily mixed-use, commercial, it's not, it's not the same as Strong Avenue, so I would throw out anything on Richmond Street as comparatives. 123 Massey Street, we were here two years ago, where that particular build, 1.7 times density, we objected to it, the city denied it, it went to the OMB, the OMB approved it, so just for the record, that one was not approved.
Over five, so if you can just quickly wrap up.
Okay, sure, I'll just, I'll just say that the precedent study, in our opinion, is not relevant, many of them were city denied, OMB approved, OMB does not exist anymore, and finally, that's our concern anyway with these precedent studies, is if this particular place gets approved for a two times density, then that becomes part of the precedent study for the next, for the next person coming along, thank you very much.
Panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, okay, so we'll have the next speaker, if you would like to add anything, if not, then, if yes, if you can just come up and introduce yourself and your address as well.
Hi there, my name's Philip McKee, I'm at 111 Massey, my concerns had to do with the height of the building, and after conversations with Josh and his agent, it sounds like they're willing to work with us to keep height and provide light levels that are comparable, but it's still not clear to me whether they are matching the roofline next door, it's hard to see from the drawings, but I'm here to voice concerns about height, and that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, panel members, any questions? No, okay, so if we have, if we can have the agent please come up and address the raised concerns.
So, yeah, we had a discussion about height, and I was trying to explain that the height allowance is actually 12 meters, and we only have a variance on the height of the side walls, which in a row house condition, you kind of want to have just straight walls, and in terms of the height, it's not going to be perceived visually from the front, and in terms of the last neighbor's concern, we're quite well set back in terms of the third floor from his property, and with the conditions set to create privacy screens on that third floor, it's really going to mitigate the visual impact from his property, and we discussed that we're willing to work with him and stand on his terrace and see if his views are affected and make any adjustments. So that, in terms of height, we feel like it's quite respectful to the neighborhood, and we did some shadow studies, and really the impact, because the rear of the project is only going to be two stories, so the shadow impact is going to be virtually the same as what it is right now on that specific neighbor's property at 111. And just going back to the other neighbor's concern at 174, their property is several houses north of 168, so there's no direct visual, shadow, any kind of impact on their property specifically, we understand that they have some concerns, but in terms of precedence, we're really looking at built form, whether they're approved here or there, it's really what is the built form in the area, and as you can see, right across the street, there's townhouses being built at significantly higher densities, so in terms of precedent setting, we feel like we're not really setting a new precedent, we're fitting in what the built form character that's already on the street. And I should say about density, really, we're actually reducing the scale of the footprint of the house by pulling the building back from the property line, which we feel will benefit the neighbor at 111, and so in terms of the density, because it's such a small lot, it's not really perceived density, it's just a metric that we're looking at in terms of the variance, so I hope that responds to those concerns, so we look at the number, and it's actually 1.99, it's not, it's not two, but it's really a number, and it's not the visual impact, and I believe how we're creating the massing, setting the building back, are the key points to understand in terms of, in terms of the impact, and once again, 174 is not directly impacted by the proposal.
I just have a quick question about the integral garage, so there's one other, is there only one other house on the street that has the integral garage, it's the one with the reverse slope, it's an older home?
There's a new project with an integral garage at 144, and also the precedent that I sent you, 79 Massey, has an integral garage, and those are two recent projects, the issue with the integral garage is that you can't really have a parking pad in the front of your lot, because then that would create an additional variance of parking in the front of your lot, in front of the front wall, so in a way, zoning kind of forced us to create a garage, which we feel is actually better to park a car inside a garage rather than on the front of the street.
I'm not sure you mentioned it, but are you aware of the planning report?
Yes, so I mentioned that we are fully in agreement with the terms of the planning report and the conditions that are set, and in terms of the setback of the third, and the size of the third floor, we are 100% agreeing with what the planning report is suggesting, and in terms of privacy, we've already kind of shown that the walls actually of the second floor actually come up to form the guard of the, of the third floor balcony, which you need the third floor terrace by code, so it's kind of working with the code, working with the zoning to create that.
Any other questions?
One of the examples you gave with 144 Strong, what's the FSI on that?
I actually don't have that exact number, but I think it's comparable, because it's a three-floor, it's a.
Wondered whether, I was just, one of the reasons I asking is, many of the examples you provided in the study are sort of new builds that did a land assembly and did a whole development, I was looking to see in your examples, ones that might have been, you know.
Yeah, I think 79.
That's why I was looking.
Yeah, I think 79 Massey is comparable in terms of the integral garage, and, I mean, I think our massing is more sensitive to the neighbors in terms of the third floor front sloping roof, and 144 also has similar characteristics in terms of the integral garage and the kind of setting back and the sloping of the front third floor, so I think we're comparable in terms of the visual impact of the density. So I think we're comparable in terms of the visual impact of the density. 144-
So there's no rebuttal for?
144 also has a slightly bigger lot.
So yeah, do you have, if I've missed you giving me, us specific examples, FSIs at your, what you're requesting, addresses? Do you have any?
I don't have the specific, of, the specifics of the FSI for 144 or 79.
Any others that you know of that were an FSI of what you're requesting?
Well, the proposals that, or the projects that I'm showing you are well above two. Certainly, the, the project on Richmond is well above two. The projects on Strawn are well above two. The townhouse developments. And I would say 79 and 144 are comparable. But they have different lot sizes, so.
Any other questions? Sorry, there is no opportunity. It's just a wave procedure. Any other questions? Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll go into discussion. Get panel members.
I have real concerns about the FSI. There may be some precedent for it, but it's, it's very large and given that there are also character concerns.
I would agree, although I will say that the applicant has given us some compelling arguments, as has the opposition. I would agree that as much as I don't like to get hung up on numbers, but in this case, two times coverage is, I mean, that's, that's a huge increase within a residential neighborhood for one specific property.
Especially the fact that it's a townhouse. It's connected on both sides. It's not a detached home. Yeah, I think the agent has, or architect has done a really good job in terms of trying to mitigate the impact of having such a high FSI. But my, also my concern is the integral garage. I would agree with the agent, with the neighbors, that this is a pocket of Victorian homes and this is somewhat of an ugly duckling. And, and I would question whether integral garage is an appropriate development for this specific site, for this pocket.
Am I allowed to?
Uh, no. Sorry.
Okay, any other comments?
Ready for a motion?
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
I would move refusal of the application as I don't believe that the FSI is within the purpose of the zoning bylaw or that the integral garage in combination with it fits the character of the community.
Okay, so a motion to refuse has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
Seconder.
Second Miss Omen, all in favor? So the application has been refused. Thank you. So once again, strong advice that you fill out the, the decision request cards, just in case there are any appeals. So we move forward with item number 10, which is 23 Roblin Avenue. Item number 10, if we can have the agent or applicant please come up, and any contesting parties, please be seated to my left-hand side. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Jesse Mena, Sixwell or Crescent, Maple, Ontario.
Okay, and if you can give us a very quick presentation of, of your proposal.
Well, it's very basic. Just requesting approvals for minor variances that are listed. We're looking to add a second story, a rear addition with second story and complete a second story on the existing bungalow. And we're just trying to redevelop to homes that is consistent within the area.
Okay, so we know, we looked through the variances, so we won't go through that. So if you have nothing else to add, we'll just have the contesting parties please come up and raise their concerns. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself and your address.
My name is Diana Castellic and I live at 21 Roblin Avenue, which is a bungalow right beside the proposed renovated property at 23.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I have lived in this house since 1996. And I, there have been renovations behind my house, beside this house at number 25, or, you know, a couple, but kind of directly near me. And ever, I had no problems with water in the basement until the last couple of years, when there's been construction directly, you know, beside or behind, or two doors down from my house. And now I have water seepage underneath. The proposed minor variances, which I don't consider to be minor, the amount of pavement that's being proposed is so much more that the, I mean, it has, all the construction that has been approved to date has already wreaked havoc with the water table. And it causes, I now get water seepage from underneath the floor. It's not like cracks in the wall, although some of ceiling cracking has happened because of all the vibrations of all the construction equipment. But this is actually water coming from underneath the floor and seeping and, you know, ruining the things that I have in the basement. And the more water, the more extreme weather we're having, the more it's going to continue to happen. So I wanted to make it on public record that I oppose all of this extra paving, because it's, there's not enough grass left to absorb. And just the size of the places are straining the infrastructure, the services that the city provides.
I was wondering, in terms of addressing your concerns, how do you feel about putting permeable pavers in the driveway instead of having just asphalt?
I don't know what that is.
So it allows the water to seep through to the, to the ground?
That may be better.
Okay, panel members, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Okay, if we can have the agent please come up and respond to the raised concerns.
Okay, so in her concern, she's worried about water that's gonna flood her basement. So in my opinion, inconsistent with most of the houses in this area, the driveways are built from wall to wall of the existing homes. And by having a driveway, I think that's gonna actually help her problem, because we're, we're getting that water away from her house a lot quicker and running it off to the road. Now, if you, if she wants permeable pavers, I can install permeable pavers, but that's only gonna seep water into the ground, which is gonna actually, I think.
Yeah, my collect around the foundation.
It's gonna be worse for her than actually, so I'm, I'm, I'm good either way.
Okay.
But, you know, and I'm willing, I've even offered that I'm willing to see what her problem is, whether flooding in the basement and help her that way, if there's any way. But I've built many homes in the area. It's a very sandy area and usually there is no water problems. And she mentioned number 25. I actually built number 25 and I have a sump pump in 25 and there's never any water in the sump pump. You know, so I don't know what, and I know a lot of these old homes, they don't have weeping tiles, so that could be a problem for her as well. So by having an asphalt pavement, I think that actually gets the water away from her house, in my opinion, so.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
The driveway width variance, is that simply because you want to pave from the edge of the house right over to the lot line?
So the, the, right now, the existing driveway is actually 5.9 meters. So it goes from wall to wall. So what they've done on my plans is they've, they've mentioned this 4.17, because we widened a little bit in the back to get a little bit more access into the garage. But I can maintain the five, the 3.59 that's existing right now. If that's, I could reduce it more on the back, like, you know.
So it's only 4.17 in front of the garage?
Right, in the rear. So you could see all the way down the side of the house, it's, that full measurement, it's asphalt from wall to wall, is 3.59. So I could maintain that right through if I need to, or-
That's existing.
That's existing, correct.
The garage, the driveway only goes up to the back of the house, right?
Right.
So, so just the front of the driveway is existing, the rear is gonna be paved?
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question in terms of how your house will match up with number 25 in terms of the rear wall. Is your house going to, or your proposal, is it going to protrude beyond that?
Let me double check, I don't think so. I think they're lining up. So if you take a look at my plans, the walls are basically gonna line up. I'm asking for a 12-foot extension, which is gonna line up with the existing.
Okay.
If you look on, do you have a copy of my site plan?
Uh, I do.
Should show that.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, discussion.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think that what's being proposed is reasonable. It does fit within the context of the neighborhood. I, I also was thinking about permeable pavers, but I do think that the applicant made a good argument, although I would probably still like to have the permeable pavers maybe for the walkway portion.
What about the newer part of the driveway that's gonna be new, which is from the back wall to the garage?
From the back wall back to do that as permeable pavers.
Yeah, that's far, quite a distance from the structure of 21 in terms of water. Just a little, little, little less hard surface.
It could, but I think that, I'm no expert on driveways, but I think it's probably better to keep the whole thing paved, because they do a very slight slope down. So what you're gonna do is defeat the purpose by having the water stop and then not flow all the way down. It makes more sense to do the whole driveway paved.
Remind you that the city is trying to get away from the load falling on the storm sewer.
True. So I'm, I'm okay to go either way, but I would like to do the walkway definitely as permeable pavers.
I would, mind me, if I was making a motion, it would be permeable pavers for all of it.
Well, I think that it, like, there is something to be said about water permeating, permeating near the foundation of the house and potentially creating mold issues and water penetration.
I mean, ultimately, it's a construction issue, but.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think if we're, if you're ready for a motion, then, I mean, I do like, all around it, it is better for the groundwater to do permeable pavers. So I'm, I'm okay to move a motion, to move approval of the application with the condition that the driveway and the walkway be constructed with permeable pavers.
I would second that.
Okay, so a motion to approve the variance application, including a condition to introduce permeable pavers on the walkway and driveway, has been moved by Ms. Omen, second Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, now we'll dissent on that one. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming up. So item number 12, 59 Bernard Avenue. So if we can have the parties, if we can have the parties contesting the application, please come up and be seated on my left-hand side. So the committee has in front of us, and if you can share one of the drawings with the parties, that'd be great. The committee has in front of us, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have statistics on the old bylaw, March 1st. And then we have statistics on new bylaw, March 22nd. We have staff reports from community planning, as well as urban forestry. We have correspondence, support from 140 Bedford Road. And then we have correspondence and concern slash interest from 61 Bernard Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself and give us a very short presentation of your proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Richard Wangle. I'm the architect for this proposal. I just want to give additional letter support.
Okay, so this is from 60 Bernard Avenue.
Madam Chair, just to be brief, I'll just take you through the package that we've prepared. So this is for a new, three-story dwelling. I've just given you a package which gives some of the statistics. I would ask you just to turn to page three, which is a site plan that's colored. It might be easier for referencing. And just noted in green is the outline of the existing home. In red is the permissible outline with setbacks of depth and side yards. And you'll see there's a garage at the back. Part of this proposal is that, this is a new home for my clients, that they want to stay in here for the next 20 to 30 years, God willing. And they want to make this house accessible by bringing it down to the ground level, not having stairs. And basically, it's grade access. One of the other reasons for our request is we actually want to narrow the house up on the west side by approximately a foot or 30 centimeters to widen the driveway. They want to keep the same garage configuration driveway down the side. So we're actually narrowing the house up and asking for a little bit of length and also widening the garage at the back so they can actually use it and get into it. That does trigger a bit of a rear yard landscape open space, which I will address. One of the other things was to maintain the east wall of the existing house at the foundation level only and then rebuild above it. And I'll discuss with the neighbor some of his concerns after. But essentially, what we are trying to do is work within the permitted outline. You'll notice that we are maintaining the front yard of the existing home and its bay in the same location, as opposed to moving it forward as the red line would allow us to do. We're just trying to maintain it. So throughout the body of the house, we've maintained a 17-meter length with a rear two-story, two-story bay and a front two-story bay. I'll now ask you just to turn to page number four. This just highlights some of the densities that have been approved by the committee in the vicinity. We're asking for a 1.06 or 1.06 times FSI. And highlighted in yellow are several examples that have been approved by this committee that exceed our requests. Page number five is just an excerpt from the 3D model. So we are redesigning the house in an annex style that's commensurate with houses in the area and is sympathetic to the design. Page number six is just an overall context of the area. And shaded in blue is our home. You can see at the rear is a large, it used to be an embassy, the German Embassy. It's now a private residence. And to the east and west, left and right of our house are different houses of different styles. And there's a newer home that was built to, to the west that's a contemporary three-story house. And what I've also given are some examples on pages seven and eight and nine of the typology of houses found in the annex that match ours similarly, that we've designed to, that show a front and rear sloped roof and side walls that exceed the 7.5 meters, sorry, the 9.5 meters and create that roof typology. And that's exhibited on those last three pages. And our house is designed comparable. Finally, I just would like to hand in a couple other pictures.
Okay, perhaps you can put on the projector, so everyone can see.
So this, this is the dwelling that we are building, proposing to build. This is our neighbor to the west. This is the new contemporary dwelling that's been constructed recently. And this is another view from the street. One of the suggestions is this is a home that we had built on 138 Bedford, that it was an existing home that had been renovated and we renovated to bring it back to an annex style. It has a similar roof style, gable on the side that goes to a sidewall condition and a front sloping roof as well. And this is from the hearing notice, a very similar site plan where we maintained a side jar that wasn't quite compliant, but tried to maintain the driveway. And this was something that had been brought up, that some of the neighbors have liked this house since it's been built and keeps the character. It does have similar variances that have been approved. And we use that as a, as a basic model. I think I'll leave my presentation at that and address neighbors' concerns or questions from the committee.
Perfect, thank you. We'll wait with the questions until the neighbors have a chance to speak. Okay, so if we can have the neighbors please come up, introduce themselves and your address. So if you can put them on the projector, that would be great, so the agent can see as well. If you can come to the podium, are you going to be? Okay, so first, if you can come up to the podium, introduce yourself and your address.
I am Sandra Fink and I live at 61 Bernard, right next door to the 59 Bernard, which wanted to be built.
Okay. So if you can come up to the podium, because it's being recorded, then there's a mic for the public record.
The east annex is a unique area because of the historic homes, and all homes are uniform in height on each block. I live at 61 Bernard Avenue, and my neighbor immediately east of me wants to build a three-storied home. Number is 615957. 55 doesn't show there, but we are all like that Tudor-style home. They were all built at the same time and equal in height, okay? My neighbor immediately west of me at 63 Bernard Avenue is a three-story, almost a three-storied home, but he has a corner lot. So it does not interfere with the aesthetics, as you can see there, 63 Bernard. If 59 builds a three-storied home, my home at 61 Bernard will be dwarfed by two giant walls and shadows and light, front and back, because he is also wanting to build a three-storied extension on the back of his home. I feel, and this will take away, I will have giant walls east and west of me, and I will certainly be dwarfed. I feel that price-wise, my home will be diminished because my home will look out of place on the block with giant walls surrounding me. We are all on small lots, and I would like it, if 59 Bernard will be a two-storied home like the same height of 615957 and 55 Bernard Avenue, so as not to ruin the historic look and uniformity and aesthetics of the neighborhood. Also, all three-storied homes on our block and surrounding area, as Mr. Wengel has just pointed out, are all on double-sized lots. So we are single lots. You can see we have very, very narrow driveways. And 59 Bernard is a single, small lot, as are 615957 and 55 Bernard, as you can see. All right, then I've got another photo. So Mr. Wengel pointed out the home that he just built, and I took a photo of it also. But as you can see, they're all double lots on that street on Bedford, and also the height is equal, so that it doesn't ruin the character. Richard Wengel is a hired architect for 59 Bernard Avenue, built a new home around the corner. Well, I've said that. All of these homes are three-storied homes, and he built 138 Bedford at the same height as his immediate neighbors and surrounding neighbors, so that it's consistent and uniform in design when you look at the block. And then also, these homes are all on large double lots, so I'm glad we've got a photo of that. Okay. Another neighbor just east of us, and on 57 Admiral Road, so that's 57 I'm trying to show you, that was built by David Bender. He is an architect and lives at his home at 57 Admiral. That's where he lives. As you will see from the photos, he has built his home equal in height to his neighbors on the block so that it does not ruin the aesthetic quality and design when you look at the street. Apparently, his neighbors requested this height, so his home would not look out of place on the block, and David Bender did this for them. And as you can see, these homes are all on double-sized lots, so it blends in. 55, 57, 59, and 61 Bernard Avenue are all 2,000 square feet. 63 Bernard at the corner lot is under just 2,300 square feet. The newly-built home at 59 Bernard will be almost double the size at just under 4,000 square feet, approximately. As I reiterate, we are all on small lots and very close together, and I feel that 59 Bernard Avenue will look totally out of place if it is built. I spoke to someone who was thinking of building a new home and went to his neighbors to ask about their ideas. And when he built his home, accommodated his neighbors' wishes, and all neighbors were happy with the results. The owner of 59 Bernard seems to be shocked with my reaction because I was not told about his ideas until a few days.
All right, so you have five minutes, so if you can just quickly wrap up.
Sure, okay, I'll...
We have the letter on file.
You do, yeah, okay. Alrighty. Also, 59 Bernard is showing on their design that they're having windows facing my east wall. I understand that it is not allowed on newly-built homes. When they built 63 Bernard, which is, you've got the photo anyway, the newly-built home, just west of me. I have had water seepage in my basement, and I don't have, it's an interlocking stone, so water can go through my driveway. That's not an issue, but it's just that I know that ever since that home was built about seven years ago, we've had water damage on the floor and the walls and mold. So I'm just reiterating that as well.
Okay, sorry, so you're going to have to wrap up.
Okay, then that's fine. Yeah, and I, all right, then that's fine.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll have, is there anyone else who would like to speak? If you can please introduce yourself and your address.
Hello, my name is David Jarman. I live at 57 Bernard, which is immediately next door to the proposed new construction. I'm opposed to points 2, 4, 6, 8, and the second one, number 2, as well. I am extremely concerned about the impacts to my property. The new building will be built directly on the lot line where the existing home is. It will be 1.3 meters deeper, the excavation. When I first heard about it, I was told that I would have to give up my part of my property for a period of several months in order to assist with the construction of the new home. I am subjected to that very strongly. I asked to meet with the architect and discuss it. He has refused because he doesn't like my tone, because I'm very upset, obviously. I am concerned about the safety to my family and friends. I've asked what sort of barriers will be put in place between the new construction and my property, which is right on the lot line. My driveway is literally right on the lot line.
Just to clarify, so the committee of adjustments is not concerned, is not under jurisdiction to look at construction issues? That's something that you will have to bring to the building department. Please continue.
As a result of these discussions, the proponent has changed the design. I have not had an opportunity to review this, so the drawings that you have in front of you are no longer the current drawings. I have some other points. All these new homes, they have to disconnect from their sumps from the sewers, as you're aware. And as this is done, the amount of water being spilled onto the area is more and more all the time. So the original area coverages, we're not even considering that. So the problem is doubly compounded, right? First, you have additional areas of all these new constructions, and secondly, you have the disconnecting from the sewer lines, which spills more water on the land. So I can, I know for my own, the land in that area is not sandy. This is not Humber River or anything. This is like rock, and the water doesn't go anywhere. So I'm very concerned about the coverage. As the other neighbor has pointed out, I'm also concerned about the visual appearance. The four identical Tudor homes in a row with now another odd-looking building stuck in the middle will look very weird. And I'm also opposed to the variance. I think it's number 8. It doesn't go far enough. In addition to the shutter that they want to put there, I want to make sure there's no pipes of any kind protruding over my driveway. And the mechanical room that they have right now is right next to that wall, so the ideal place for them to put the fumes will be right on my driveway, and I object. So, thank you.
I just have a question. So how tall is your, what is the height of your house?
I didn't measure it, but it's the same as was in the...
Maybe the architect will be able to.
Yeah, they're all in a row there.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, panel members? Okay, no questions. If we can have the agent please come up and respond to the raised concerns.
I'm running backwards and forwards. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to address some of the concerns from the first neighbor. First and foremost, the area is not uniform in height. There's many examples of houses across the road. In fact, most houses in the annex are three-story homes. To say that this is, three-story houses is an anomaly, I would disagree vehemently that most houses in the area are three stories, as is shown on a lot of the photos that we gave you examples of. This, in terms of price, I won't address that. I don't think that's a concern. But in terms of houses in the area, these houses were built approximately in the 1930s, the three called mock Tudors. Most of the houses in the annex predate the turn of the century and late 1800s, 1880s to 1890s, including our building on Avenue Road. We are recreating a style that's closer to the average style in the annex, that as opposed to these, I would call would be the outliers and the anomalies. And obviously, the new contemporary house is certainly a bit different, but we're not here to talk about style. In terms of a reference to 138, it should be known that that house, we saw a height variance. Instead of 12 meters, it's actually 13.47 meters. The height that we're asking for is not a variance, it's 11.69. We're just asking for a sidewall height of the sidewall. The actual height of the building is 11.69. Now, I think we're approximately 2.7 meters higher than the other homes because we've actually put things in the roof. They don't have that. But at the same time, we've lowered the house down by approximately 0.6 meters, so we're one step out of the ground. So typically, most older homes of this vintage would have ceilings of 8'4", 8'6", just pre or post-war. We have a 10-foot ceiling on our ground floor, but we're reducing its impact by having it only one step out of the ground instead of the three or four steps that we come out. So our second floor is at or below the existing line of our second floor. This house is not a 4,000-foot house. In fact, it's that which would relate to 371 meters. It's only 294 meters. And I've given you comparisons of houses that far exceed what we are asking for in terms of density. I think we're well within the range of what's acceptable in the area. In terms of the impact to the neighbor on the other side, in terms of the lot, yes, we are building a basement that's deeper, but we have not changed the plans. The plans are the same. It's the constructibility that we're working on which are the concerns. So the idea of maintaining the foundation wall of the existing home, waterproofing it from the inside, and then stepping the foundation down deeper within our property is something that we can do. And certainly, working from the rear extension on to work from within our property line and then do a double-wall construction where we step it inward so we can avoid shoring. We've addressed that since our first meeting. And it's not that we haven't been in touch. The neighbors have been in touch to describe, because I was asked not to participate as I was called a liar in a letter, and I don't partake in that type of conversation. I have integrity. I've been in front of this committee for years, for 25 years or 28 years, and I don't lie. I put forth what I feel is the best plan, and I won't have my integrity challenged by this individual. I'm sorry. In terms of barriers, we will have to do protectability on the site. In terms of drainage, we have a greater-than-required front yard landscape open space. The rear has a challenge to it. Again, there's comments from the planning department who has no concerns with our plan and agrees with our increased front yard setback to maintain more landscaping, so we have an option of permeable pavers in combination with cistern and with French drains, which we will be employing because we have the same concerns of water running down our driveway. We don't want to ice up, and we have to deal with it, and we don't want to discharge on the neighbor. The fact our mechanical room is on the east side of the house, we can still vent to our driveway through our system, and we'll do our best to address that. And we can't have anything protruding, obviously, onto his driveway. That's not permitted. I believe I've answered most of those questions. I'm answering questions of the committee if they'd like.
I just have a question about the front wall height. The modern one to the right, how does that compare to what you're asking for?
I don't have a survey of its height, but I would say if I looked at our house that we'll be building, we're going to be approximately from the top of our window of our second floor, I'll point.
I believe from this point approximately, we're going to be up about three meters or so in total to the top of the roof.
Can you just lower it down?
Pull it down a little bit, yeah.
Better?
Yeah, that's good.
So I believe, again, this ground floor height is going to be the only thing, because we're, you can see there's several stairs that go up. We're frothing, there's going to be one step out of the ground, so we're limiting the front portion stepping in down here. That mitigates the extra height on the ground floor. The second floor has an approximately eight-foot ceiling or eight-foot-two ceiling. We're going to have a nine-foot ceiling. So I believe we're going to be within one foot of the ceiling of the existing second floor. This roof height, by my gut tells me it's about 2.4 high, even though it's on an angle, you lose height from the perspective, but I believe it's probably got enough that I can easily stand in there, plus a foot or so. It's got to be minimum 1.8 to 2 meters in there. So our roof is going to go up probably another, I can see another three feet or so from there, at that point, a meter higher. But again, it's underneath the 12-meter height. We're 11.6 meters, we're still 30 centimeters underneath the maximum height. And I said, the house that the neighbor keeps referring to, this is a 13, over 13 meters of height that was approved by this committee. So it has three stories plus a fourth story up on top.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question in regards to this site plan number on page 3. So you were showing us the building envelope. I was just wondering, what is the reason why you wouldn't move the house a little bit to the east?
Forward? Oh, sorry, to the...
To the east, so in terms of the setbacks.
Okay.
I mean, sorry, to the west.
Yeah.
So increasing more setback from the east.
So the main reason, the way it started, is it's not a wide lot to begin with, but the big concern was that the, our client, one half of our client, had a concern about driveway width. This is only, this is less than 2.9, this is 2.9 that we've achieved to the property line from here to here, enough to be able to drive through. There's a concern, the existing setback right here is quite narrow, and they find it difficult to back up between the buildings. And they wanted to maintain this versus building a house to here and integrating a garage which wouldn't be in character with the neighborhood. So the intent was to maintain this wall, foundation, build on top of it, because that's existing. And then we were adding building line, and that's what we did at Bedford at 138, that was the same idea. And that's why we decided, we just wanted to try to increase this dimension so the drivability increases. It's more comfortable to back a car out, but you can't turn a car, you have to back it up, and they do use their garage.
And there is no possibility to make the house just more narrow?
It's narrow as it is because of the extra setback. So that was really our preference, was to maintain that line. And again, planning had looked at that, and it was something that we thought they may have a concern with, but they didn't because they've done many examples in the area where we've maintained these side yards existing.
And as long as we can keep all of our construction on our property and our eaves, et cetera, within our property line, which we have to do, and we have to satisfy the building department, they found it to be a reasonable request.
Okay. Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, if no more questions, we'll go into discussion. Any comments?
If you mention it, sorry, but the staff report, you're okay with the...
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, so discussion then?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that, I hear the concerns from the residents. I understand that change is often difficult. However, I feel that we've been given a lot of compelling arguments of why this does fit within the context of the neighborhood by the agent. There, we've got a house on the corner that is massing, I think, from a design perspective, that this actually fits in the neighborhood context much better than a modern design type. And I think that the architect's gone to great... than, than a modern design type. And I think that the architect's gone to great lengths to, to make something palatable that's a fit. I do also buy the argument about the driveway. I remember when my grandparents had a house in, in downtown Toronto when I was learning to drive, where you had an inch on each side between the houses that made it really difficult. So I'm of the opinion that what's being proposed does fit within the context of, of the neighborhood, and I, I think the variances to support the proposal are reasonable.
I agree, and it does, although it needs a sidewall height variance, the full height of the structure is still within what's committed under the bylaw.
And again, when you look at the house on the corner, I, I would question which one is gonna look, in terms of the context of the neighbor, is gonna look more in keeping, and I would argue that this proposal would in fact look more in keeping with the area.
Yeah, and to be more explicit, that the, I hear what the residents are saying about it being part of a row of very similar houses, but that is not in our purview. This, in general terms, is in keeping with the community, and the variances are appropriate.
I echo all of my colleagues' comments. I'm still a little bit concerned about the exterior main wall heights, from seven, from the level of 7 to 11.25. So that is where I'm conflicted. I believe the agent has shown us some evidence to see the impact specifically on both adjacent properties, but I'm still a little conflicted on that.
I would suggest that that gets to purpose of the bylaw, and it is one of the, mean wall height versus total structure height is one of the places where we have the clearest guidance on that. And there is some flat roof here, but we're not talking about a shoebox.
Mm-hmm.
And that flat roof has been mitigated quite heavily. I don't think that we're seeing a contravention of the intent of that difference.
I would agree. Okay. If, if there are no further comments, Madam Chair, then I would move approval of the application, including forestry condition number three, as well as the conditions outlined in the planning staff report dated September 13th regarding use of permeable pavers for the driveway, and to have the front yard setback of 2.4 or meters, limited to the bay window projection, as per the site plan.
So a motion to approve, including the two outlined conditions, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Okay, second, Ms. Hayes, all in favor? Okay, so the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you for coming out. Okay, so Madame Secretary-Treasure has informed me that for item number 16, 37 killed on in a row, that the agent is here, and he would like us to reopen the application. So panel members, I'll need a motion to either reopen or to keep it closed, the application?
I'm struggling a little bit with this one, because it's a bit of flip-flopping, and...
Uh, no, until, until we have an opportunity to vote on the reopening.
I have some concern that we already ruled on it. I didn't canvass the room to see nor notice if somebody left once we closed it, or somebody was here, and they wanted to speak to it, so I'm not sure that...
That's, that's also valid concern.
My concern is, is with respect to, you know, whether or not we allow it to be reopened versus, and that, but whether or not we would agree to hear it today is another question.
I would suggest it would be reasonable to reopen and immediately defer, on the understanding that there would be no further deferrals.
Okay.
And that would have to be with the recirculation fees. I mean, I do have concerns about this, but I think that is possible.
I think that it is a valid concern that some contesting parties might have left, thinking that the item has been closed. So it makes, I understand there's contesting parties here, but there might be others.
There's only one there, basically.
But there might be others, and I feel like in terms of a fair procedure...
There's a very small few, and we...
Okay, but you were here earlier, so you don't know who else was here, is the point we're trying to make.
We were here, and I was, we were here about before 9:30, and they were at 9:35, so...
Uh, well, okay, I'm sorry.
When the item was called...
You were not here.
Weren't here.
Okay, so panel members, how would you like to proceed?
I think there was a miss.
Okay, this is, this is in discussion with just the committee.
I think we're here to move a motion to allow the matter to be reopened, but that the matter be rescheduled with recirculation fees.
Okay, Madame Secretary-Treasure, can we do that in one motion, or do you need two separate motions?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
So the motion would include the reopening and defer all right away, or do you want two separate motions?
There's no, yeah, there's no reason that two administrative actions can't be a single motion.
Okay, so to reopen, to defer, including recirculation fees?
Yeah.
And within, coming back within the next three months, right? Three months max? Okay, so a motion to reopen and defer the application, including recirculation fees, and to be, coming back to this panel within maximum three months, has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a second there? Okay, second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Okay, so the, the application has been reopened and deferred till within the next three months. Okay, thank you. We apologize for the inconvenience, having to come up here, but, but, yeah.
We're done?
Okay, so we're adjourned for lunch at 12:05.